Okay, so the first item we have, I think, on the agenda tonight is just the minutes of the last meeting. Just anybody, everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Any questions, changes?
No.
Uh, any motion to approve the minutes from the February 7th meeting? Second? Someone second?
Yeah, Brian.
Brian, okay, all, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye, aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. So now the second thing is the continuation of the public hearing that we had on February 7th. Uh, with regard to the hidden lane requirements. So, uh, I guess what I would want to do is open that, that hearing and ask the, if someone is here for the petitioner to, tell us what, if anything, they've done. And, uh, if there's any other new information they want to submit, and then if there's any other people to speak, we'd allow them to speak. And the board members can ask questions during the, uh, the hearing. So, uh, is anybody present for the petitioner?
Uh, good afternoon, for the record, Sophia Bitts is from R. Leveque Associates here on behalf of the applicant and property owner.
Yep.
Good evening, um, if I can through the chair, share my screen, would that be possible?
Yep, that's fine.
Perfect. Okay, with any luck, you can see the as-built plan for the property in question.
Correct, yep.
Perfect, so, um, the request before the board this evening is for a variance for a front yard setback. Uh, the house currently sits forty-nine point seven feet from the property line.
Correct.
With a setback of fifty feet, so, um, the position that we are taking or proposing is that due to the shape of the lot and having had a radius, I'm here, which is not a straight line, um, that the relief is necessary. Had the setback been measured perpendicularly, it would have been in compliance. Uh, but due to the roadway being shaped the way that it is, um, and how the measurements were taken, unfortunately, there was a shorting of point three feet, um, of where the house is located, so.
Yeah, and I think this was, yeah, partly explained, uh, and I guess some of the members had some concerns because you're asking for a variance. Um, and it's, the mistake was made internally when they moved the building, uh, further to the north, which resulted in this, uh, anomaly, so to speak, but it, it's something that, you know, they're concerned about setting a precedent, uh, some of the members, um, with respect to saying, hey, look, you make a mistake, we'll give you a variance. Uh, typically, uh, when you create your own hardship by making a mistake, that's not typically grounds for granting a variance, and, and am I speaking accurately for those who have raised that issue?
Yes, you are. Yes, yes.
And so that, that was one of the, the questions, so we had asked, uh, possibly whether or not, uh, that line could be relocated in that area, the street line, and, and go back to get an amended, um, uh, subdivision approval, and move that street line on that curve a bit inward to get you the point three feet. Um, and get a waiver from the planning board instead of having necessarily whatever the fifty-foot road, um, uh, you end up with a forty-nine point seven road, uh, uh, in that, in that particular area, just by altering the curve that, that's there.
Yep, and we did explore that option. Um, obviously, this would be an easier route to accommodate the relief that's necessary to secure the variance. For if we have to go before the planning board and amend the plans, it would not, it would amend the subdivision in its entirety. So it would, it would affect the plan being referenced for all the lots in the subdivision, not just this one lot.
Yeah, no, no, we understand.
It would be a significant, yeah, it would be a significant change, and also, uh, the ownership of the road, you know, it'd be asking the town, um, to grant that relief and.
Well, I don't think the town owns the road, the town merely, I believe, has an easement.
Um, when I last checked, and then maybe I'll have to check with my office, but when I last checked, the permission would have to have been granted from town, um, which would have probably done a town meeting.
Right, the planning board, well, yeah, I don't know, it is, my understanding is still a private way. Has, it's been accepted as a public way, as far as you understand? I thought it was still a private way.
Yeah, that's what my understanding was, based on the conversation internally, but maybe, maybe that wasn't conveyed properly. But when I spoke to Tom in my office, um, who prepared, not that only.
You basically said that this has been accepted by the town as a public way?
And that we would have to go to the town in order to make any amendments, not only to the planning board, but the town itself, um, to have them sign off on changing this one little radius here.
Yeah, cuz that.
Be significant lift to, to do so.
No, no, i- it's different than what we were told at the last hearing. We were told that this was still, uh, a subdivision road and hadn't been accepted yet by the town. Um, and you're now telling us that this is now a public way, um, and has been accepted as a town, which would then require going back to a town meeting and altering the way, um, you know, for the town and the layout that was done by the town.
That is my understanding, unless maybe Nina can shed any light on, on that in an opposite direction, so that's, that's how I understood.
I, I, I don't know, I mean, I haven't checked with the DPW, I just assume, given the fact that they, they would have known their own subdivision. But, um, do we know whether, uh, the street is a public way or a private way?
Um, I don't know about street acceptance yet, but I did smoke, speak with the town engineer and the DPW, and, um, he was the one that advised against moving the lot line because it would take, um, land away from the town-owned street and affect, um, where the utilities would lie and follow the roadway.
Right, I mean, I don't think it'd make a big difference cuz most streets are fifty feet wide, and, um, the paved portion is usually thirty feet, and then you have easement, uh, area, usually ten feet on either side of the street, uh, for the installation of utilities. And most utilities are probably, you know, more toward the center, not within three tenths of the line. Uh, but if it's a public way and it's already been accepted, then there's been a, a description and, and it's been accepted as a town. And that would have to go back to town meeting.
Can I just interject here that, you know, we, we could, we can talk all night about, you know, why we can't do it that way, even though that was a good idea when we were talking about it at the last meeting. So now we're, 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 we're looking at a situation where an applicant has asked us for a variance, which is, we, we all know is, you know, gotta, gotta, got a test that has to be met in the state of Massachusetts. It's a, it's not a easy form of relief, and it has to relate, you know, the way the law sets forth. And I, I am all for giving the applicant relief. I am, I'm also, or was a real estate developer, I know what it's, uh, you know, I know what it's like to have a problem like this. The problem is that the relief you seek is not something, in my opinion, this board has the authority to grant. It cannot grant a variance on this case, based on the facts that have been presented, in my opinion. It cannot, and to do so would be to poison, uh, forever, uh, you know, uh, our credibility and, and, and potential future cases, where construction errors are made, surveying errors are made, engineering errors are made, all kinds of errors are made, we're all human. Uh, and, and that, you know, just finding a, 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 uh, uh, oh, oh, you know, relief out of, out of the law and misapplying it, uh, to, to resolve it is just not something that, that personally, I want to be in the business of doing. So I, I don't know what else to tell you. Uh, if there, Mark, what's, what's the result of this? If this just stays the way it is, that the problem here is that the applicant can't get a CO from the building department?
Correct.
And actually, if I may add also, the, the bank has ceased funding, um, going forward because of this encroture. So the development.
So they, they either, they would have to cut out the point three, you know, and I don't know what that would entail in terms of, cuz it's on the corner of the garage, so I don't know if they could alter the structure to move it, you know, to remove the section that's, that's encroaching, uh, by the point three. And I have no idea what that's gonna cost cuz I haven't been given anything on that.
But it isn't relevant, it, it doesn't matter.
Well, that gets into the ultimate cost sometimes, uh, when you got, you know, when you talk about a hardship. Cuz if it's something related, it, you know, if it's minor.
It's not, but it's not, because the hardship was created by the applicant.
Well, and I understand, that's what I'm saying, but sometimes it's applicable, Dan, when you're in a situation where there is a hardship and the person then has to show what the financial impact of that hardship is.
I get it, but that, right, yeah, but that, I would, I would save that for either the building department or the, or the, or the town or, or the planning board. You know, I hate being in this position, because on the one hand, you, you, you sympathize with the applicant, you, you hate to see somebody in this position. Uh, but you know what, they're in it, and, and we, we ought not to be in the position of saying, we feel so bad that we're willing to subvert our, you know, the law to take care of it and just sort of, you know, do this, you know, that's just a bad idea.
I mean, I, I, I don't necessarily agree with you, Dan, to a certain extent, I think this is somewhat de minimis. So, I mean, if this was a much larger variance, I would have a major problem with it because they created their own problem.
If it's de minimis, why not deal with that and not be here for a variance?
Well, it's a de minimis variance, is what I'm saying.
You know, is there another way you can get the building department to recognize, or the town engineer to recognize a measurement? As opposed to measuring it as she, as Sophia, excuse me, is that the way I pronounce her name?
Yeah, Sophia, yep, thank you, yes.
Okay, the way that she initially came at this, I was slightly encouraged. It's just that we don't, who has the right to change where that's measured?
So, the, the, yeah, the lender, if I may clarify, the lender is, is measuring it to the closest part of the radius. So as you can see, the closest part, you know, had it been perpendicular, we would have been fine, it would be a moot issue. Okay, but they're measuring it to the closest part of the radius.
I get it, so, how can that get re redrawn and accepted by the bank? Uh, with, with our gr- good graces, short of issuing a variance that I can't vote for?
They, they hired a separate surveyor that went out and measured this on their own, cuz we had done the original plot plan, and they went and hired another surveying firm, and that's what they're going by. So they're going by the measurements, and then we went out and fielded truth that, um, and did find that it's point three feet off. So the options really are, and they, and they said the same thing, you gotta, yeah, they're, they're gonna variance, and then the board here indicated perhaps we could change the lot line, but that would affect the entire subdivision and getting it re-modified and approved, so.
I get where you're at. I fully understand where you're at, and Mark, I understand where you're coming from, you know, I, I, what I'm afraid of is, um, well, you, you know what it is, it's precedent and everything else, and I realize it's de minimis. If you, there's gotta be, or what I would be willing to do is if someone can come up with it, is a way for this board to grant, uh, a, a, a different measurement and, and, and some, or somehow the town needs to say that she's got the fifty feet.
Right, and I, I think that's the problem, I think, I think it, it, they've certified the actual boundary and they measured. And I think what, what happened was when they decided to move the property a little bit to the north and reorient the house, no one bothered to consider the fact that it was on a curve. Um, and because the curve at that point became a little closer than where it was when the house was originally set, that's why we're in this situation. Um, and how, unfortunately, the house has already been built, um, and the garage, that section, that corner, basically where the garage is in there is point three feet too close to the street line. I feel that's somewhat de minimis. Uh, the other option would be for them to basically remove the encroaching portion and, 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 and have it fit exactly fifty feet and remove three tenths of a foot. What that does to the garage, I have no idea, um.
Well, Mark, if you were to, uh, write, if, what would a motion look like?
Well, it'd be a motion saying there's a hardship, yes, there was a mistake made, um, you know, with respect to the, the hardship. Um, and, uh, you know, would require removing the hardship as remade, it was clearly a mistake made. Uh, but because it's, in my opinion, somewhat de minimis, uh, in terms of what's there, I could, I could find, uh, grounds for a variance because it's such a minor, uh, variance and the costs that we're talking about. And it, it meets all of the other requirements, uh, of the town in terms of it safely, it's forty-nine point seven feet away instead of fifty, uh, three tenths of a foot, I don't think makes that much difference in terms of the safety off the road and all the purposes as intent. And, uh, you know, clearly, there was a mistake made, uh, and, uh, it's there. There have been other mistakes, I've been in other towns where, uh, some genius, uh, built every house in the subdivision, measuring from the actual McAdam part of the street, not the street line, and every house on the street was ten feet too close to the sideline, uh, and it was a whole subdivision, had been in existence for twelve years.
I, I, it's happened to me, Mark, I built the building forward to the street line when a city planner demanded I do so, and I didn't, and I didn't check his own demand, and.
Yeah.
It's a mess, anyway, uh, well, I'd, I'd, I'd be curious what Jim and, uh, and, and Francis think about it.
Yeah, I don't understand, uh, just let me speak a minute, uh, why we're not taking out a ninety-degree angle? I don't understand this angle, if they're measuring this forty-nine seven, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
You take it at a ninety-degree off the corner of the foundation.
Yeah, the requirement of the, of the, and I understand, but it doesn't require, it's the closest line to the home, and that's where you have to do the measurements from, and you have to have fifty feet from the closest line, and we don't have it. Um, had the street, it had this property been further to the south, uh, where it was originally, it would have been fifty feet. Uh, but they, when they moved it, the, because the curve got closer, someone didn't realize that they needed to angle the house back a little bit to reflect the, the curve on the road getting closer to the house there. So you always have to measure to the closest point on the property line for your setbacks.
Yeah, so I mean, from my standpoint, I, I think this is enough a hardship from what it is, that we should grant this, that's my opinion on it. James, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm trying to, still trying to figure out a way, I mean, I'm looking at that exhibit eight-one, right, of the, the regulations that show how, how to measure the lot line and street lines, and we've all come around trying to figure it out. But, you know, if the banker, if someone's gonna, to demand that it be read verbatim the closest possible width, then yeah, I mean, we're dealing with the forty-nine seven, even though, you know, if you go to a straight line or a ninety-degree angle, it's definitely clearer than that, I guess the.
Yep.
The debate I have is that whether or not, A, it's been adopted as a public way, or B, the town's adverse to amending the, the street width, and I believe Nina indicated that, that the town's.
Yeah.
Prefers that nothing's done, nothing's done to the street line, right? And so like, it's a matter of, you know, where's the street line as opposed to the lot line? Certainly, I think it's an additional, quite frankly, there's probably more, um, space between the lot line and the street than there are in other places, if you wanna do the reverse angle, right? So maybe, maybe it's adapted, even though it doesn't meet it, maybe it's adapted because the whole purpose, right, of, of setbacks is so that there's an adequate space between the street line and the building.
Like, potential impact and.
Although there may not be forty-nine point seven to the lot line, I think there's probably, quite frankly, more, if someone were to, to look at it, more between the lot line and the street line at that radius, when you're looking at eighty feet as opposed to other, you know, street lots, so. If you look at it that way, and obviously, the, I think there's a financial representation that there's a hardship. Um, I understand, obviously, Dan's point, right, like, I'm not, I'm not looking to open up a can of worms by any stretch of the imagination. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
But I think the whole, the whole point, if you get into the whole point of what, what's the purpose of front yard setbacks, and it's the safety between the street.
Right, and that's one of the things we have to find, and I think we, we can find that, it meets all the required. The, the, the one we're having the problem is the hardship requirement, because this hardship was created by the person who relocated it and didn't take into consideration the fact that, uh, by moving it to the north, that they were moving it closer to the street line, I mean.
So, Sophia, can you share with us exactly what the circumstances were that arose, that, that created the construction in the setback?
So, as you can see, um, this was the previous plot plan that was submitted for building, and the house was, was a little bit further to the south, so originally, the, it was gonna be fifty-one point two feet to the closest point on the radius. So when the house was constructed, it shifted a little bit to the north, so it got a little bit closer to that radius. So there's a little triangle piece that kind of is causing this interruption. I know, I should have gotten a better diagram, but.
Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm, that part I'm clear on, what I, I, it's more of the, the protocol and process by, is this, is, was this the homeowner deciding?
They wanted the house moved to the north.
Did the homeowner decide, uh, that he needed the house to be shifted? Because it doesn't seem to me, I'd like to, I'm curious about the reason that it was shifted, because it wasn't.
I can see they made the house larger, Dan, is what happened. Because if you look at both those plot plans, they made the house a little bit bigger.
Yeah, so the, the shape did change a little bit as well, there's a little bit of a, a bigger bump out if you look at the ass.
I was, I was really hoping that you weren't gonna say that. I was really hoping that you were gonna say we did, we did that because we had to be out of the way of something that was in our way.
Yeah.
You know, then I would have given you a retroactive variance, no problem, but, but.
What?
But you gotta make the house bigger, and, and the builder didn't say, wait a minute, I can't just make the house bigger, I gotta check my lot, I gotta make sure I'm within my setbacks, and he didn't, and he didn't, right? You guys did what you were supposed to do, didn't you, as engineers?
We did, we did, and, and like we said, the, the plot plan was prepared with the proper and letting them know what, what the setbacks were and what, where they had to be. I mean, we put these on, on all our, all our plans, but unfortunately, this, this one falls a little short. But again, I would, I would argue that the shape, due to the shape, cuz we can do soil shape or topography, right, for variance, I would say the shape of this lot, um, kind of obstructs and, and creates a hardship, um, for the placement of this specific house due to the, the measurement distance to the radius, so.
Yeah, you, you would be entitled to a variance more than likely if that was pre-existing, you know, if you were.
Exactly, if I didn't.
Trying to build that house on that, yeah.
If I had come in earlier.
I hate good stuff.
I know, I, I feel your pain again, and, and, you know, if there was another way or more direct way to get it, uh, we wouldn't be before you, obviously, cuz it's a tough spot to be in, so we, we appreciate your time and your, your efforts to look at this and try to help us out here.
Ryan, do you have any comments or anything?
The only thing I think we need to do is because we're in such a tough situation, is they need to exhaust all measures. Like you said, what's the feasibility of adjusting that corner of the house by that three tenths to?
Yeah, I mean, if we turn down the variance, then that would be their option to, to get a permit. They'd have to remove the offending three tenths of a foot. Now, what that does and what the cost of that is, I don't know, there hasn't been any evidence given to me what that is, and I have no idea. Um, I'm not a builder, so Dan would probably have a better idea of what that would entail in terms of cost.
It would, it would, well, I, I don't know what the house looks like, but, uh, it's a, if you shave.
It's a garage.
Yeah, if, if you take a corner of that garage off, it's gonna mess up the, the door opening, it's gonna, it's gonna jog the wall and make the garage. Is that a two-car garage, Sophia?
I believe so, yes, I, I'm just trying to, to get a hold of the builder now to see if I can.
It'd end up with a bay and, and a messed up second bay, uh, so.
It, it, it's to the side of the house, is that correct?
It, it is a foundation point as well, so I don't know what that would do as far as structurally. I mean, I, I don't know that that would be the avenue they wanna take.
Is there, is there a way, is there any other relief that, that in the palette of reliefs that we have to offer? Is there any other relief that we can give these people? Is there a license, is there a, not a special exemption?
We, we've done. No, I mean, it, it, there was, there is a state statute, but East Long Meadow did, never adopted it, um, that, um, they can grant in particular cases, especially for pre-existing structures, without having to find a hardship, uh, cuz a lot of times what ends up happening is you have houses that were built, uh, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, uh, before there was zoning, and they're too close to the line. Now, all of a sudden, um, you wanna expand it because it was only a two-bedroom home, and you've got three kids, uh, and you need to put another bedroom on, but you can't go anywhere, uh, without violating a zoning bylaw. So that, uh, the state did have a provision, but East Long Meadow didn't adopt, it was a home rule amendment that allows towns to basically grant by special permit, uh, the ability to, to expand a pre-existing non-conforming, provided they made a finding, you know, six A finding, that it, uh, it is substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there before.
And there's no way.
We never adopted that, so we, we can't use that, uh, method, and this isn't a pre-existing structure, this is brand new.
Right, doesn't matter anyways, we can't use.
Right, so I, we're, we're really stuck between either granting this, uh, and basically, my, my opinion is, I'm not sure it's gonna set a precedent because it's, I feel that the three tenths de minimis, your chances of having somebody, and if someone came back with another three tenths de minimis, they probably would grant the same thing. Um, you know, I, I'm not worried about setting a precedent, but you start getting larger, then I've got a, I've got a real problem. Um, uh, so I, it, I mean, that's the only reason I would vote for this, uh, I think there is a hardship, uh, they partly created the hardship. Um, uh, was it done intentionally? No, uh, and, uh, I just think they just didn't realize, uh, when they had moved the, and, and accommodated by making a little bigger house and moving it to the north, that, uh, that because of the radius, they were making it closer, they just didn't realize it. And they, you know, they just thought like it was a regular line, it's gonna stay at fifty-one point two.
I, I get all that, so, you know.
It was clearly a mistake, uh.
So let's just talk about that for a minute, let's just talk about that for a minute, so.
Yep.
Let, let's say that, um, you know, we grant this, and next year, you know, in a commercial site, somebody makes a mistake, it's relatively de minimis in terms of its, uh, dimensional error, but the practical effect of the error is a source of, of, uh, of contention or consternation for a, on a butter or, or.
Yeah, I mean, but here we have.
Just, I'm just being theoretical here, what, uh, so what happens in a case like that? What do we say then when somebody in Sophia's chair says, hey, look, it's only three inches? You know, and, and you got, and you got somebody that has a legitimate gripe with it, now his dumpster doesn't fit. And I know it's unrelated, but that's what's gonna happen, and that's, that's what I'm afraid of. I don't know when it'll happen, maybe it's not for a long time, maybe I'm being, uh, you know, maybe, you know, it may sound as though I'm being petty, and I'm certainly trying not to be. Um, I, and it isn't the dimensional problem, I, I mean, I agree, it's de minimis, it's that the law says what it says, I didn't write it.
Yeah, no, no, and I understand.
I didn't tell the town not to adopt that home room, home rule charter that they probably should have adopted, especially in a town like this. But, uh, but, so they had, they've left us with a, with a law and a statute that we're poised to effectively violate, despite what you said, because, Mark, everything you've said, while, while I agree with you in spirit, it, it, it's, it's short of the law, it's.
No, I don't disagree, I mean, uh, you know, I, I think you have a, a problem, I think in this particular case, there's no neighborhood opposition. Right, well, I bet there's no neighborhood opposition, in fact, there's support in the neighborhood for it, from the people who are budding, so there's not, there's no opposition. It's, in my opinion, de minimis, I think it's a unique situation, I don't think it'll be appealed, um, and it'll become a legitimate variance, and, and if someone wants to come in and have the same exact circumstance with all the neighbors in favor of it, with a, a de minimis thing, I wouldn't have a problem granting it in the future. That's me personally, I can't, I, I, I agree with you that I think it, uh, it, it, they created the hardship, um, and I think this, given the facts and the circumstances here, they meet all of the other requirements, there's no opposition, and it's de minimis. And based on that, I would find the hardship making them remove whatever portion of the garage they have to do to make it comply creates a, an undue hardship for a, a de minimis, uh, uh, encroachment. That's my opinion, but you don't have to agree with me.
I got one last question, and this is to Brian and Francis and Jim. Uh, if, if I were to vote for this, are you, are you guys predisposed to vote for this?
I am, uh, Dan, I, I already said that.
Okay. I'd be curious to see whether or not Mark thinks that maybe some conditions may be appropriate to attach to this variance. Or anyone.
I mean, in, in, in terms, I mean, obviously, I, I wouldn't allow any additions to be made, uh, they couldn't make any, uh, additions here uh, to the front sideline or whatever that it, that it gets. If in fact, something happens and the house is destroyed or something, I'd ask that the, that it be put back to the, uh, requirement. But as long as this house is standing and is maintained, uh, there and isn't destroyed by a casualty or something, uh, then I would allow it to stand, and only if it's destroyed by some sort of a casualty, I'd require them to, you know, get rid of the de minimis.
The other, the other thing is, the owners should probably realize, I think I'm right about this, that if we grant the variance, it becomes a pre-existing non-conforming structure, doesn't it?
Well, we'll be. Yeah, if pre-existing non-conforming is by definition was there before there was a law, here, there was a law, this is legally existing because of the variance, that would be.
So we're, so we're gonna grant a variance, and then it would be, then it's a conforming law?
No, it's not a conforming law, it's, it, it legally exists because of the variance.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting is, uh, you know, you wanna put limitations on their, on, on, on the, on the. Okay, so what I'm suggesting is, uh you know, you wanna put limitations on their, on on the, on the ability to add on to the structure. Well, they have that limitation, and they're gonna have to come before us.
Right, but I'd also say if the house was destroyed by a casualty, that when it gets rebuilt, it gets rebuilt in accordance with the zoning bylaws.
Okay, I I'd agree with that, but 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 my question was more just for the, for the uh, in the best interest of the homeowner. Is the status of this lot going to be after the vote, after the the variance is granted? A preexa- a a noncon, it'll be a nonconforming lot?
It'll be a nonconforming, legally existing lot because of a variance.
Which means that that e- on any nonconforming lot, as far as I know, no matter where. They wanna make a change, even if it's into, you know, further back where there are no violations in a setback, they gotta come before the town, no matter what they do.
They probably do, that's what I'm saying.
Frankly, if I was the homeowner, I mean, that that's a dim- diminution of value, but that's, 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 that's not for me to decide. But whatever. I just think that point.
Right, I mean, Sophia, you, I think you will understand that we have a board, uh there's a five member board. For this to pass, you would need a vote of four of the five members. Um if it passes with three of the members yay and two members no, you fail. Um and the variance isn't granted, so I I just wanna, you know, have that upfront. So there would have to be, if there was a a vote here, would have to be either four one or five nothing uh for it to be granted. Um a three two vote won't do it.
Understood.
Um, the other question I had, Sophia, I don't know if we're within, I just wanna make sure. Uh that, because you guys asked for the continuance, uh that uh, you know, we have so many days to make a decision. From when it was applied, I don't know where we are on that process, but I just wanna have uh the permission from the, the board. Because of the condition, condition to uh, uh, you know, have that, that period of time extended. Uh based on this, your second hearing that we've been going to grant the variance, so it's not granted by uh mistake, by inaction.
Nope, understood, we're definitely willing to work with the board in its full capacity.
Okay, so you'd get, you'll agree at that extension?
Yes.
The board, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So do we have any other questions? I'm like, my feeling is we should just probably take it to a vote at this point. Yep, and it leaves a standard fall on its own, so do we have a a motion uh yeah, um to approve this variance? With the conditions, uh the hardship would be, yeah, basically, the 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 shape of the lot and the weird. Um angle that was created uh by the move, um that's unique to this lot uh that's there. Uh we know that the hardship was created by somebody's mistake. When I don't wanna point the fingers, could have been the builder, could have been the homeowner, could have been, who knows? Uh but the reality is the house is already there. Um and uh I think it's de minimis, uh and I would want a condition just saying that, you know, if there's ever gonna be a change. And it has to be rebuilt, that it gets built back in accordance with the uh the setback requirements at the time. Because I don't know what the setback requirements will be ten, twenty years from now. So we have uh anybody to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, uh anybody to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so let's take a vote, uh we'll, we'll start, I guess, James, you made the motion, are you in favor of it?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Favor of motion, okay, Francis?
Yes, in favor.
Brian?
Vote in favor.
Dan?
No.
And I'm gonna vote in favor, uh so.
I'm happy it passed, I I'm glad, I'm happy it passed.
I I think I understand, and on principle, no, I I understand where you're coming from, um it does pass. Uh.
Great.
Uh, you know, whether or not somebody files an appeal, there is a twenty day appeal period from when we filed this decision with the board. Um I believe it meets all the other requirements, other than, you know, potentially the hardship. I I, you know, as I said, it was there, whoever designed the building should have thought about it when they did, but. Uh hopefully, it doesn't get appealed, because I can't guarantee that a court will find the same way that we did. Uh and if it gets appealed, there's a good chance, we didn't do you any favors. Um but I don't think there's gonna be anybody appealing it, because there's nobody here opposing it, so. But uh, uh do we have any other questions or anything?
Sophia, you did a one, you did a very nice job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, you really did.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, have a good evening.
Okay, yep. Nina, are there any other matters that that come up before the board that we have to vote on?
No, nothing else today.
Okay, uh do we have a motion to close the meeting?
I motion.
Second? All in favor, raise your hand.
Hi.
So it's, it's unanimous. Nina, do we have anything coming up for uh April?
Um, not yet, but there's still four more days before the deadline.
Okay, all right, well, we'll see what happens, whatever happens, happens, so. Yeah, I I I just, I couldn't log in, Nina, I apologize, whatever you you'd sent me the first time, didn't work, I kept doing, because I always get it and I, I get right in. This time, it didn't let me get in, and I was like, oh boy, what do I do now?
I was surprised I got you on the phone, I didn't think I did.
Yeah, um, usually I'm in the office, it's just easier for me to work, and I, I don't get in situations like you do with your kids coming in or a dog or somebody. Coming in and uh creating havoc.
Yeah, havoc, that's for sure. I got my door shut now, nobody. All right.
Okay, have a good one, guys, goodbye.